From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Chuckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, roll call please.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Ms. Goldner, would you give us a report on actions taken in closed session, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Couch and members of the board. This afternoon, your board heard items 35 through 39 on the board's agenda. No reportable action was taken on any of them, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. All items listed with a C-A above the consent, excuse me, above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. We can act on those all in one motion unless any member of the public or any member of the board chooses to pull any of those for separate consideration. The consent agenda starts on page two, consists of item five only on page two, and then continues to page three, all the items there, six through 11, page four, item 12, and then 14 through 19, and page five, items 20 through 25. Is there anyone here that would like to pull? Oh, I apologize, Madam Clerk, we have one correction, and that is to item 12. The recommended action is to set the hearing for Tuesday, December 8th. We're changing that, the correction is to Tuesday, December 15th. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to pull any of those items for separate consideration? Any member of the board? Seeing none, we need a motion on the consent calendar and to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
We're now sitting as the Kern Sanitation Authority, and there is one item, it is item one, that is on the consent calendar. Is there anyone here that would like to pull that one item off the consent calendar? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar and adjourn as the Kern Sanitation Authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries, all eyes.
Thank you, that takes us to item two, which is public request. This is a request for hearing by Tahoma Ranch Public Facilities Financing Authority for a finding that there is a public benefit from the improvements funded with proceeds from the 2015 bonds issued by the authority. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name's Paul Timig, I'm the Bond Counsel for the Tahoma Ranch Public Facilities Financing Authority, and I'm going to talk about this item. The Tahoma Ranch Public Facilities Financing Authority was formed back in 1999 to assist in the development of Tahoma Ranch. The county is a party to the Joint Powers Agreement that created this authority along with the Tahoma Castic Water District. The, and county staff sit on the board of the Tahoma Ranch Public Facilities Financing Authority. Since it's been created, the authorities established two different community facilities districts to develop infrastructure for the commercial developments you see along the freeway in the Tahoma Ranch area. Under the California Government Code, because the Tahoma Ranch Public Facilities Financing Authority doesn't have an elected board, it has to come to the Board of Supervisors each time it wants to issue bonds to have a public hearing by the Board of Supervisors, and it needs the Board of Supervisors to approve its issuance of bonds. The approval in no way commits the county to any financial support or any obligation whatsoever to the bonds or the Community Facilities District or the authority. It merely satisfies a requirement of the Government Code that we need to have fulfilled before we can issue the bonds. Earlier this afternoon, the Board of Directors of the Tahoma Ranch Public Facilities Financing Authority met and approved an issuance of up to $15,500,000 of special tax bonds for one of the two Community Facilities Districts, subject to this Board of Supervisors holding this public hearing and approving the issuance of the bonds. The bonds will be repaid solely from special taxes levied in this Community Facilities District, and only on the property in that district. No one else will be responsible for the repayment of the bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We have had a public hearing like this and board approval for, I think, five or six different bond issues by this Financing Authority in the past, and this is just, you know, again, we have to come to you because of the requirements of the Government Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timig. So, we'll, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are those here that would like to give us any comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board for questions, comments, and action. Thank you. Need a motion in a second, please?
A second.
We don't have a second yet.
Second.
Move a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Please reconfirm your vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Gleason?
Yes, that's me.
Did you vote yes?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then the vote is all eyes.
Thank you. Thank you.
That on your end, not ours.
We got it done. Item three is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter that is not on the agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public presentation? Seeing none, we'll go to item four, which is board member announcements and reports. Don't see any of those. Takes us to item 13, under the County Administrative Office. It is a response to the September 1st, 2015 referral regarding alternatives to improve transparency, consistency, and performing the audit function differently. Mr. Nyland.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. As you mentioned, on September 1, 2015, your board discussed the internal audit function performed by the auditor controller and directed our office to provide information that would improve, as you mentioned, transparency, consistency, and how reports are presented, and alternatives for performing the audit function. This report provides a summary of our county auditor controller's current audit processes along with a summarized analysis of comparable counties that have processes that differ from the county of Kern. Notably, unlike most other comparable counties, Kern County currently does not have an audit committee, a countywide risk assessment to select audits, and an approved audit plan. Therefore, after researching your board's requirements, other comparable counties, and your authority under Government Code, it appears that three options are available for your consideration. The first option would be status quo, in which the auditor controller continues the exact same process as currently performed. Option two would request that the audit function and processes be performed differently by restructuring, similar to some other counties, in that we would create an audit committee to provide additional transparency, guidance, and oversight of the auditor controller and other engaged auditors to follow and report. Option three, and this is a request that the audit function and processes be performed differently by exercising your board's authority to release the auditor controller from performing all or some biennial audits under Government Code and provide options to engage other outside auditors. Specifically, option two is a practical means of providing an audit committee that may be used to independently review, objectively assess, and discuss audit concerns and improvements. The committee could provide auditors and other interested parties a forum where they can work together to align priorities and improve the audit function and process. An audit committee is recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, and many other comparable counties have already implemented the audit committee. It provides independent guidance that may assist your board in fulfilling oversight responsibilities of audits performed on your behalf. Excuse me. The auditor controller and County Administrative Office concur that this alternative may improve transparency, consistency, and accountability. If this is the desired option of your board, a separate follow-up referral to the County Administrative Office and County Council is needed to provide specific audit committee structural options for your consideration in the future. Therefore, it is recommended that your board receive and file this report and provide our office direction. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be pleased to answer questions if you have some.
Thank you, Mr. Nyland. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this report? Good afternoon, Ms. Bedard.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mary Bedard, Auditor Controller. I do agree that the establishment of an audit committee would be a good thing for Kern County if it enhances collaboration and communication on audit issues. However, I would like to put this issue in some context. Kern County has a long tradition of support for a strong audit function and an appreciation for what regular, ongoing audits can do in safeguarding taxpayers' money. This tradition dates back over 35 years. However, beginning in the early 1990s, with the state's budget problems and reductions in county general funds, auditor controllers across the state had their resources cut, and many counties, including Kern, were forced to cut back on their auditing activities. From the early 90s until 2007, the Kern County Auditor Controller's Office was able to audit county departments only once every five or six years. The portion of the CAO's board letter that describes what other counties are doing to comply with Government Code looks very similar to what we were doing prior to 2008. One question the CAO did not ask other counties was whether this lack of regular departmental audits is done by choice because they believe this is a better method, or if it is, was due to a lack of resources, as it was for Kern when we were using a similar model. A lot of things can happen in a department in five or six years. Employee turnover can result in loss of knowledge of proper internal controls and of policies set by the Board of Supervisors. Also lost was the sentinel effect, when, for lack of a better word, that fear of the auditor coming in was gone. People can get sloppy or take shortcuts when they know they are not going to be audited on a regular basis. By 2007, the Board of Supervisors, to its great credit, in my opinion, determined that a stronger audit presence and audit function was needed. I believe Kern County was ahead of many other counties in recognizing the importance of regular audits. At that time, the board acknowledged the need for that sentinel effect, that watchful presence. Some additional resources were given to this office to accomplish this, and it was put into county policy that we would conduct an audit of every department at least once every two years, that these would be primarily compliance audits with a review of internal controls, and that we would also conduct countywide audits. All of this we have done. In the first few audit cycles after this change, we had to look at nearly every area of every department because it had been so long since they had been audited, and there were risks throughout the departments. There were many findings and recommendations in those first audits after 2008, so in the second audit cycle, we also had to look at most areas of departments in order to determine if they had corrected the previous findings. However, since that time, we have been able to increasingly rely on the risk assessments we do of each department prior to beginning the audit in order to focus our resources on the areas of most risk within the county. In addition to the support the board has shown over the past seven or eight years to the audit function, you have also supported increased automation within my office, and that impacts the entire county. In the payroll area, we were able to build many controls into the track's timekeeping system that were not available in the mainframe payroll system. That means fewer payroll errors and much less for us to audit relating to payroll. We also have reporting tools that make it much easier to pull data for testing and to identify questionable transactions. With the automation we have done and the efficiencies we have gained, we have been able to pull several areas out of the biennial audit process altogether and handle them through continuous monitoring. These include employee use of county purchasing cards, employee travel, and county cellphone use. This allows us to provide much more timely feedback to departments in those areas, identify problems or misunderstandings early, and educate departments to prevent these issues in the future. There are now many more audits containing unmodified opinions with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. However, that does not mean that we found no issues or deficiencies. Those issues, those issues that fall below the level of significant for audit purposes are called control deficiencies, and are reported to department management and to the compliance officer in the County Administrative Office. We provide them with the findings and our recommendations the same way we do for the deficiencies reported to the board. Many of these findings, if left unaddressed, could grow to be significant deficiencies in the future. By auditing departments on a regular basis, we are able to identify these types of problems early, and departments are able to address them before they result in significant consequences. Maintaining an audit presence in the departments on a regular basis is important to retaining the gains we have made over the past few years in educating departments in proper control procedures and following the policies established by your board. We currently conduct risk assessments of each department at least once every two years when we audit them, so over a two-year period, we have been able to assess the areas of most risk countywide. Last year, we conducted 17 fiscal year 1314 department audits, plus two internal service fund audits. We performed countywide monitoring of purchasing cards, and we performed audits specifically requested by your board of KMC's pharmacy and operating room procurement process and the physician's relative value unit payments. As is pointed out in the CAO's letter, incorporating audit requests from the Board of Supervisors is also part of a countywide risk assessment. This year, we anticipate conducting 16 departmental audits, together with countywide monitoring of travel, purchasing cards, and cellphones. We anticipate having audit hours available to conduct other audits as well. Currently, we prepare an informal audit plan for use within our office, but we would be very happy to prepare a formal audit plan with our recommendations for the additional areas to be audited, based on the areas of most risk as identified in our risk assessments, and to present this plan to either an audit committee or to your board for your review. There are things that can be done to enhance the audit process. Setting up an audit committee that is structured to improve collaboration and communication is an option I concur with. But I was elected by the people of Kern County, as were you, and we are all responsible for safeguarding taxpayer dollars and ensuring they are being used appropriately. We have made great strides over the past seven years with the support of your board in improving the control climate throughout the county and in living up to our responsibility to the taxpayers. I caution your board against taking any action that would move us backwards, losing the gains we have made over the past several years. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Could you, would you be willing to provide us a copy of that? Thank you. Are there any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for questions, comments, and action. Mr. Nyland, you're suggesting option two in your staff report? Option two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that is correct. Option two, the establishment of an audit committee. A recommendation from your board as a referral to my office and to the county council office to come back with a structure for the audit committee would be appropriate at this time if the board was so inclined.
I would support that.
Yeah, I'd punch in.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Thanks. Yeah, I would support that as well. Thank you, Mr. Nyland, and Ms. Bedard, thank you for your comments as well. So I'd like to move on staff's recommendation for option two, and for the CAO and council to return to the board with a more detailed plan.
Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have a more clear understanding of who bears what responsibility here before we take this step. So I'd like to have our legal counsel provide us with an explanation of exactly, precisely what responsibility is vested in our auditor, controller, as she is elected by the people of Kern County, and what responsibility and authority is vested in us in that regard as we, as we are elected by the people. I am completely about accountability and transparency. I'm the person in the county that asked us to create an accountability and compliance officer, that Ms. Babuena now fills that role. This has nothing to do with that, but I want to understand the, the level of discretion and discernment that is at the feet of the auditor controller as opposed to that which is at the feet of the Board of Supervisors, so we can figure out how these things fit together.
Supervisor Maggert through the chair. I'd be happy to do that. The code section that drives all of this is Government Code Section 25250, and that is the internal audit function for the county. That is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors. That statute requires your board to at least biannually examine and audit, or cause to be audited, the financial accounts and records of all county officers that have responsibility for the management or collection or disbursement of money that belongs to the county. You have, your board has the responsibility to make sure that gets done, and you can direct the auditor to do that, or you can hire outside auditors to do that. You can decide who you want to do the audits. The county auditor is an elected official, you can't tell her how to do audits, but you can tell her what audits you want to have done. And in a nutshell, that's what the law is. Does that answer your question?
Thank you for your answer. It answers some of it, part of it. So, I completely understand that we don't tell an auditor how to do, go about conducting the audit. That's the, at the discretion and discernment of the auditor because they, we can't limit the scope of, of the investigation they're going to conduct. But I guess what I'm looking for is a more specific thing than that. Is there any audit that we are not able to ask the auditor to do? Is there any audit that upon our request, she is not, he or she is not compelled to do? I want to know where the seams are in between there, because we have made some requests of the auditor's office that I believe they have complied with, and we've made some requests of the auditor's office that I don't think they've complied with. And I, and I don't want to ask something that's unreasonable of someone, that they, I'm not trying to make someone do something that they don't want to do. But I want to know what, where is the spectrum of, of discretion that we have about that?
Under Government Code Section 25250 and 26883, your board has the right to require the auditor to perform audits of any department, any office, any board, or any entity or institution that is under your board's control.
Well, audit is a broad term, sometimes. We ask the auditor to assist us with coming up with procedures that would help human services not to fall prey to some mistakes that were made recently. Is it within our spectrum of authority to only ask for that to be done, and then it's the auditor's discretion as to whether or not they do? Or is it, you know, where does that fit? That's not precisely an audit.
Well, you can require her to do an audit. It sounds like your questions are more, what is the scope of the audit that you can tell her to do? And as I recall, some of the discussion was about whether she would be required to help formulate a corrective action plan. I don't know the answer to that one. I'd have to drill down on that before I could give you a definitive answer. My initial reaction is, you probably could not go that far in telling her to do an audit, because then you're telling her how to do the audit.
I'd rather have your studied opinion.
Yes.
Rather than your initial reaction.
And I'm happy to give that to you, I just need an opportunity to do that.
On the flip side, what are the specific responsibilities and the spectrum of authority that the auditor has as the elected representative of the people of Kern County?
You know, I, I don't know the specific answer to that. Perhaps Ms. Bedard can respond to that. I couldn't tell you that today.
Supervisor Maggert through the chair. My understanding is, in Government Code, the auditor must handle the property tax apportionments, the auditor also must prepare the financial statements. Beyond that, most of the duties, as far as the controller's side, paying the bills, paying payroll, are done at the direction of the board, and as has been stated, actually, although I don't believe it's ever been done in any other county, the audit function could be taken away from the auditor by the board, that that audit function does belong with the board. So my, my duties are primarily on the controller's side, as far as being able to be having the specific requirements of property tax apportionments in preparation of the financial statements.
And if I might, Deputy County Counsel Jerry Bradley is here, and Jerry is assigned to represent the auditor as an elected official. Perhaps Deputy County Counsel Bradley could come up to the podium and answer the question if she knows the answer, off the top of her head, which she might.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Supervisor Maggert through the chair. The answer is that your board is responsible for the auditors, you set the, excuse me, the audits, you set the conditions, and you set the terms. The auditor must fulfill those terms within generally accepted governmental accounting procedures. But should your board request something other than a compliance audit, you should take into consideration the fact that certain audits require more personnel. And I believe, if I remember correctly, a compliance audit was chosen because it required less staff time to prepare. Should your board decide that you wish a compliance audit with additional requirements, you are well within your purview to request that, and the auditor is within her purview of saying that that's not allowed under generally accepting accounting principles, but if it is allowed under those principles, then she can provide it to you and should provide it to you. Have I thoroughly confused everyone now?
No. So, who?
You gotta be ready.
We were.
(laughing).
A compliance audit. A compliance audit, a financial audit, those are all different, kind of the facets on the head of a diamond that there's lots of different ways to look at. There are little nuances, but they're each separate kinds of engagements. So I appreciate your response and Ms. Bedard, thank you for your answer. I respect our auditor controller. I admire the work she does. I'm, I am grateful that the people of Kern County get to decide that independent of us, that there's some good accountability there. But I, before we decide, I like the idea of a committee. I like the idea of us having a process by which we try to assess risk and that we try to measure the risk and look at those departments that are the most likely to cause us, you know, to have incurred greater risk. So I like the idea of all that, but before I'm comfortable deciding what the responsibilities of this committee shall be, I would like to fully understand exactly what the role of the auditor controller is and exactly what our role is and then for us to have a discussion about those things that are within the purview of either or both of us and decide before we just decide to go forward. Because I don't know that, I don't want to get a result that's similar to the results we already have received. I want this to be constructive and productive and I'm very confident it'll be collegial and professional because that's how everybody here is, but, but I want it to be the very best, most effective result that we can potentially come up with. So I would like us to have that level of analysis before we decide what we, what responsibility we charge this committee with.
Supervisor Maggert through the chair. I would be happy to come back with a legal analysis to supplement the CIO's board letter so that you'll have, so that everyone on the board, including Ms. Bedard, will also have an opportunity to know exactly where those lines are.
And while we're at it, I think it would be good to know the other, all the responsibilities that the auditor controller is vested with by the voters of Kern County. There's more than just audit and control functions, I think, so.
I'll make sure to include that in my supplemental report.
So I'm not opposed to the establishment of this committee, but before we vest it with what it's charged to do, I would like us to have an understanding of what role we play, what role the auditor controller plays, and, and then figure out what role the committee plays to interact between those two things. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Thank you. Do, Mr. Nyland and County Counsel, do you think that we can, we can do what Supervisor Maggert is asking for in the context of the referral to staff that I made with my motion? Because you, you're...
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, I believe that could be accomplished, that we could come back both with a structure, proposed structure, and outline of duties of an audit committee as well as a clear, more defined definition of responsibilities and roles.
Thanks. Because the, part of the staff report that I had circled here says you'll provide a recommended audit committee structure, roles, responsibilities, member appointments, and those kinds of things. And so I don't know if you're comfortable with that and if we can collapse the two together and have them come back.
Yeah, I think that can very well be accomplished.
Is there a second?
You can take that as a second.
So a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
I think that takes us to the end of our agenda. We just need a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, November 17th at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Thank you. Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.